I'm here, but the Asheville City Council will come to order. Just a quick reminder to please turn off your cellphones or put them on silent mode. All right, if everyone will stand, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
I'm sort of spacing. Okay, today's invocation will be given by Councilman Hunt.
I'm often find myself when it's my turn to provide an invocation to look for readings that are relevant to community and are common challenge of going forward together in community. And this is, in the Christian faith tradition, this is Holy Week, and so I have a reading I'd like to offer from the Book of Matthew. "You are the salt of the earth, but if salt has lost its taste, how shall its saltiness be restored? It is no longer good for anything except to be thrown out and trampled under people's feet. You are the light of the world. A city set on a hill cannot be hidden, nor do people light a lamp and put it under a basket, but on a stand, and it gives light to all in the house. In the same way, let your light shine before others, so that they may see your good works." It's also Passover in the Jewish tradition, and there's a reading from the Perkavoth, which translates as Chapters of the Fathers, and people in the Jewish tradition often study this in the time following Passover. "We are here to do, and through doing to learn, and through learning to know, and through knowing to experience wonder, and through wonder to attain wisdom, and through wisdom to find simplicity, and through simplicity to give attention, and through attention to see what needs to be done." Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have one proclamation today, and that is the Tartan Day Proclamation.
Is someone here to receive the Tartan Day proclamation? Oh, great, okay. Thanks for being here. I'm going to read this, and then if you'd like to say a few words about it, I invite you to do that. "Whereas Americans of Scottish descent have played a vibrant and influential role in the development of the United States, and whereas from the framers of the Declaration of Independence to the first man on the moon, Scottish Americans have contributed mightily to the fields of the arts, science, politics, law, and more. And whereas our regional folklore is populated with hillbillies, a term referring to the Ulster Scots with a traditional loyalty to William, Prince of Orange, and known in Scotland as Billy Boys, as well as rednecks, a reference to the red neckerchiefs worn by Presbyterian Scotsmen. And whereas today over 11 million Americans claim Scottish and Scotch-Irish roots, making them the eighth largest ethnic group in the United States, now therefore I, Terry Bellamy, Mayor of the City of Asheville, do hereby proclaim April 6, 2013, as Tartan Day in the City of Asheville, and encourage all citizens to join in the celebration of National Tartan Day with appropriate merriment and much revelry. And witness where I have heron to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Asheville to be affixed this 26th day of March, 2013. Terry M. Bellamy."
Thank you. I'm Jay Lor. I'm president of the local chapter of the New World Celts. We're an international organization that promotes Scottish heritage and all things Celtic. On behalf of our group, the New World Celts, Asheville Chapter, and the Celtic peoples everywhere, thank you very much for this.
One of the things I discovered in researching that proclamation in regard to hillbillies is that the traditional name of the monarch butterfly hereabouts is kingbillies, and they refer to the William of Orange, the orange butterflies. So when they come through here in September, when they're migrating, you can think about William of Orange and tartan kilts, okay?
Very good. All right, before we take up our consent agenda, just one item here to figure out. We have a budget work session coming up on April 3, which is scheduled from 3:00 to 5:00. It's the second of two budget work sessions. This coming work session is, as usual, is dedicated to capital, and there's been a request to add an item to this budget work session to talk about, to allow for input generally on the budget. This would be in addition to our normal public hearing on the budget, and specifically to address some of the parks and rec items. So the suggestion is that the work session take place from 2:00 to 5:00 rather than 3:00 to 5:00 to allow a little more time for that, and we wouldn't move the location. We would, it would continue to be on the first floor of the building, so that staff didn't have to move everything over to the civic center, which was the other venue suggested. Is there any, anyone who wants to try something different on that, or does that sound okay? Good? Yes?
If we're going to have public comment when we actually have the hearing on the budget, I'm not entirely convinced that extra public comment is, I mean, we're going to hear a lot of it, I would guess. But I'll go along with the majority here. I'm not...
Well, and the, the way we would structure the work session is that the public comment would come at the end, so that there would, if anyone, hopefully anyone in attendance would have the bulk of their questions answered through the presentation process.
And I think it should be emphasized to council, this is not the required public hearing on the budget. This is just an opportunity for the public to give input on some items that have come up during budget deliberations.
Okay, so that is, so it'll be 2:00 to 5:00 on April 3 here on the first floor. The other announcement I need to make is that the hearing regarding the bid today has been postponed until April 9, 2013. So if anyone was here on the business improvement district agenda item, that matter has been postponed until April 9. Okay, now we're to the consent agenda. There are a number of items. Is there anything that, anything that anyone on council would like to pull out? Any, any, do I have a motion?
Move to approve, second.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Is there anyone wishing to make any public comment on any of the consent agenda items? All right, no public comment. Any questions from council? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We'll move into the presentation and reports. The first item on the presentation and reports is proposed improvements to I-26 from US-25 and Henderson County to I-40 interchange. Kathy Ball is still headed back from the legislature right now, but I understand Mr. Majors is here with us today for that presentation with the Department of Transportation. Please come forward. And typically, just so everyone knows, on these presentations, there is 10 minutes allotted for the presentation. Maggie D., are we got, oh, there we go. Good deal.
Good afternoon. I'd like to say thank you for having me to come up and to do this presentation for you all. Anytime you desire to have me to come back, I'd be willing to come. We have a long process that we need to endure, but we'd like to continue to make sure that we coordinate and communicate, so that we may be able to deliver what would be good for the City of Asheville. So this particular project is, according to our State Transportation Improvement Program, STIP I-4400/ I-4700, and as you all know, it has improvements to I-26 in Henderson and Buncombe Counties. I am Andre Major, and I am the project engineer for this project, representing the Department of Transportation. Obviously, the project is located in the two counties that I mentioned. The I-4400 portion is in Henderson County, and the I-4700 portion would be in Buncombe The description is as stated, and you see it up here, that we propose to improve the Interstate I-26 from US-25 in Henderson County to Interstate 40 in Asheville-Buncombe County. The approximate length of the project is 22.2 miles, with 13.6 of that being in Henderson County and 8.6 of it being within Buncombe County. Our purpose for our project is to make improvements to the existing and future travel demands, and to relieve current and projected congestion along the interstate corridor. That's not privy to being simply the facility that's in place now, that will also include looking at other options to add to, such as some type of transit, anything that will help improve the facility and to relieve the congestion in the area. Now, how will we do that? We would do that by developing a range of alternatives. The slide that you see in front of you right now is not this particular area, but I have it there, so that you can see that we develop alternatives with the premise of thinking of widening an existing facility or building on new location. And to kind of put it in perspective, if you're going to develop an alternative on new location, you know, that's really territory that you haven't disturbed before, and the thought behind that is, there could possibly or potentially be more impacts when you go on new location. And our job is to minimize or avoid impacts as best as we can, to the maximum extent possible, and I'll talk about that as I go through the presentation. But for the purposes of this project, considering it's an interstate, having an interstate facility, which is a major thoroughfare in any area, we typically would try to improve that particular facility, which means that we would widen. We would widen to one side or the other, or within the median, and improve that facility that way, instead of building another interstate on new location to serve the purpose that the existing one is serving. So, once we come to a place where we develop our alternatives, we really have to take into consideration the lay of the land, consideration from the public, consideration from the natural environment as well. And so what we have to deal with are constraints. I like to call them challenges, because they're things that we work through, but for the sake of this presentation, we'll call them constraints or sensitive issues. And so I'll go through some community impact types, some aviation issues, some public facility issues, and cultural resources. For the community impacts portion, what we have to contend with, or our challenge, is to avoid or minimize impacts to the maximum extent possible to the natural and the human environment. The natural environment, you need to think of water resources or wildlife resources that we would try to make sure we minimize impact to, as well as terrestrial, terrestrial communities. For the human environment, obviously, you think of businesses, residences, schools, churches, hospitals, public facilities, any impact to the human environment. And these go hand in hand. When we talk about aviation, I decided to throw this in there, because we have two airports that are within the vicinity of the project. One would be the Asheville Regional Airport, which would be in the Buncombe County, on the Buncombe County-Henderson County line, and then there's the Henderson, Hendersonville Airport, which is in Henderson County. When we talk about public facilities, challenges that we face when we deal with public facilities, the public uses those facilities, and we want to minimize impact to those, to minimize disruption to the quality of life that we have in the area. Some of the public facilities, and of course, there are many more than the ones that I have listed, but some of them are the Broadmoor Links Golf Course, Park Ridge Hospital, Blue Ridge Community College. Considering the cultural resources, many of you are aware, of course, that the interstate travels beneath the Blue Ridge Parkway Bridge, so that Blue Ridge Parkway would be one cultural resource that would present a challenge for us. The bridge that you see on the slide, of course, is not the Blue Ridge Parkway, but this is a bridge type that has been sent to me, in terms of evaluating and looking at the different types and styles of bridges that we would like to see in the replacement of the current one that stands. And there will be some type of improvement, which we're looking at the potential redesign of a new bridge going over the interstate. I will say that the National Park Service has had correspondence, and they sent information, and they have requested a desire to let the Federal Highway Administration, Eastern Lands Division, develop the design for that bridge. So we're, we're working through those issues as we speak. Then other places would be the Rugby Grange Facility, which is a historic property that's in the Henderson County side, as well as the WNC Agricultural Center. Now, for the purpose of presenting and delivering this project effectively, we, we have some public involvement initiatives that we'd like to really stick to, to make sure that we keep coordination with our local governments, as well as the public. And I'm going to go through just real quickly the visualization photos that I have, and talk about our citizens workshop, and then also talk about our merger meeting process. For the purpose of visualization, what I anticipate is getting an aerial view of the lay of the land, and being able to put things in place to give the public and the local officials an opportunity to visualize what the project would look like on the ground once it's implemented. This right here is a project that I had down in Beaufort, North Carolina, in which we have the Gallants Channel Drawbridge, which was going to be replaced, and that is currently headed for construction now. So what we did is, we put in a few visualization photos to try to give the local constituents an idea of what a new bridge would look like, to get them to visualize, and that's what I anticipate doing here with the Blue Ridge Parkway Bridge, as well as just the interstate facility that we anticipate implementing. But there's several alternatives. I'll click through these, and I won't go through the details, since it's not this area, but you can see the visualization photos would be very effective in terms of giving a feel to what you would have, what you would like to see on the ground. Citizen informational workshops, we just held one January the 31st here in the WNC Agricultural Center, and so far, the feedback that I've received has been very positive. Obviously, with any project, we get yays and nays, we get good and bad, but I have received, for the most part, positive feedback, and we encourage more feedback. And the statement that was made at our citizens workshop is that we would like to have correspondence by March the 31st, but we will continue to take correspondence for the duration of the project. The deadline of March the 31st was to be able to have information to provide for our merger team, which I'll talk about real quickly. Merger team is a group of individuals that come together to help us deliver our project. We want effective project delivery. The team is made up of resource agencies, such as the United States Army Corps of Engineers, the Environmental Protection Agency, Wildlife Resources Commission, US Fish and Wildlife, TVA, and the such, as well as NC DOT and the Federal Highway Administration. And what you have before you are several points that we must concur on before we go to the following point. And this ensures us of smooth flow, once we have the design for the project agreed upon, to be able to get permitting from the Corps, or the TVA, or whatever federal agency is the lead agency requiring permits from us. So just to kind of go through them real quickly, one would be purpose and need, and the current position of our project, where we are now, we are going into the purpose and need phase. That's why we needed the input from the public. And then you go on down to the complete hydraulic design and permit drawings. For our project timeline, we anticipate having the draft environmental impact statement in late 2015, and we'll be coming back to do a public hearing in early 2016, and have our final document in late 2016, early 2017. Now, between that time and now, we'll continue to correspond, and it will be more than just that actual public hearing. We may have another citizens workshop, and that can be requested by you or, or anyone, really, but what we will do is commit, continue to communicate. As far as our right-of-way acquisition, that's partially funded, and it's in 2018, fiscal year 2018, and then the construction is slated to begin in fiscal year 2020. One of the reasons I really want to emphasize continuing to communicate and committing, continuing to coordinate is because we are in the business of making decisions in reference to these projects, and your input is very valuable, not just your input as a local government, but also the public input. So that's why we put the emphasis on the citizens workshops, and I'll also have a website that will be up and running after our first merger meeting, and then we'll also send out newsletters to give updates of what has taken place and what's transpired on the project. So we want to make sure that we've accomplished the goal of beginning early. The challenge with that is, we don't have a lot of information to give, but we want to make contact and begin to get input, because we want to know what you would like to see on the ground. And it'll also put us in a position to account for any changing policies that you may have, because we don't want to continue with the project and be in conflict with things that you are expecting and anticipating here locally. Then it also helps us keep our merger team members informed. One of the biggest issues with the merger team is, we get together and everyone's protecting their particular resource, but we also need to make sure we have the public's interest in mind, their best interest at heart. And then finally, that's why the public involvement is very valuable, and it will allow us to not only keep the public informed, but the public can also keep us informed, and you can keep us informed with what's going on here locally. And that's the presentation that I have for you. If you have any questions, I'm willing to take those. If not, I'll just...
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Quick question. Thank you, Mr. Major. This project, its progress was halted maybe seven or nine years ago or so, with a federal lawsuit that determined that the environmental review process back then was not sufficient to address the effects of, on sprawl development and also other modes of transportation, and I may not have gotten that completely right. If I haven't, please correct me, but can you talk, can you address that and talk a little bit about how this process will, will address those concerns that were raised back then?
Yes, sir. That, that was roughly 10 years ago. A document was completed for the Henderson County portion of this project. The reason it says I-4400, I-4700 is because this was originally two separate projects, and the I-4400 was in Henderson, the I-4700 was in Buncombe. You have two counties, two different divisions. The lawsuit, there were accusations of improper planning and not following the NEPA process, and sometimes, we being a large organization, become our worst enemy. And to kind of put it in perspective for you, there was planning that was taking place for the entire corridor under separate projects, and not just this particular project, but also the I-2513, which is the connector in Asheville, and the A-10, which, which goes beyond. Well, what happens, the planners for those projects, either one person would have them all, or three people might have them, but we're all in the same branch and department, and we're working together, and we meet, and we talk about those things. The challenge is not necessarily the planning, because we have to coordinate that, and we have to coordinate design to make sure that it's a smooth flow. The challenge comes in when you talk about funding. And because of the way we're set up with funding, with different divisions, each division has their own priorities. And so when you talk about from a state level and a federal level of being able to fund a project, it just so happens that the way those projects were programmed, the Henderson County portion was ahead of the Buncombe County portion in terms of funding and being able to construct the projects. They weren't that far off in terms of time, but what happens is, in this particular instance, the Buncombe County side of the facility has heavier traffic flow than the Henderson County side. So it makes sense to be able to improve where the traffic need is, prior to improving the other portion. Well, we kind of had that a little juxtaposed. Not that it was going to complete the Henderson County side prior to the Buncombe County side, but the way that it was programmed, that's the way that it appeared. And the lawsuit basically said that we didn't properly plan according to the cumulative effect of improving the facility piece by piece. So what we did was, we went back and we said, okay, we have logical termini, and that's what we're required to do from, from a NEPA standpoint, but you're right, we probably should fund these together, we probably should plan them together, which that was taking place anyway. So what you have today is, instead of it being two separate projects, it's combined as one project, and the entire planning for the entire facility is taking place under one environmental impact statement. Now, that's separate from the I-2513 and separate from the A-10. The challenge that we still face is the funding. You know, when you talk about piece by piece, there may be funding to do this portion right here, and then come back and do this portion right here, but for the entire bit, you know, we have to find the funding for that. So currently, in our TIP, it is partially funded, which means that we work our TIP in a five to 10-year plan, and then we also have long-range plans. But what we'll do is, we'll begin the process of construction simultaneous, you know, in Henderson and Buncombe County, for portions that we can deliver, and then we'll continue to move on to the other portions until we have the facility complete. The thing that gives me heartburn about that, but there's no way around that challenge, is it almost appears as if we'll be having construction going on continuously for some time. And if you're, and I'm pretty sure you are familiar with any construction project, when you go over a couple of construction seasons, you know, you start to get a little leery of, you know, when are we going to stop seeing the barrels? When are we going to, you know, have this thing in place? But that, that's the challenge that we face. So in a nutshell, the difference in this process and the one before is that we are looking at them together, and we're trying to fund them together, and there'll be simultaneous construction going on, so not to create a bottleneck where the heavier need is, which is in Buncombe County.
Okay, thank you. I just have an observation, and I know it's not your decision, but I'm sure that if you asked the people of Asheville, what part of I-26 needs modification, it would not be the stretch from here down through Hendersonville, but rather the stretch from where this project ends going north through Asheville. So, I mean, I, I think citizens get kind of frustrated when they see that they have traffic problems in one area, and the DOT seems to think the traffic problem is somewhere else, because the people of Asheville have been very impatient about I-26 through town here for a long, long time. But I know, I'm not accusing you in any, in any sense. I know it's not, you're doing the project that you've been assigned to, but it does seem sometimes that the priorities are upside down.
Yeah, and, and let me say this, because this is very important to hear. The I-4400, I-4700 project isn't one that's taking precedence over the connector project. They're concurrent projects, but the I-2513 project is ahead of schedule in terms of comparing to the I-4400, I-4700. They should produce that document before we produce ours. You know, the letting for the project is roughly within the same time period, but that one's slightly ahead of, of, of my particular project. So I, I do want to be clear, we recognize the need in Asheville, and we're working toward that, and you all have your challenges that you're dealing with in terms of working with the state and getting project delivery on that, and then we have our unique set of challenges as well. But we work together, and, you know, if there's anything that, that we can do to help to expedite any project, believe me, we, we try to look at it. But I don't want you to think that because we're talking about this project, and because that's, you know, quote unquote, "my baby," that that's going to take priority over that.
So when you say I-2513- So, when you say I-2513, that's the connector project?
Yes.
Okay. That would confuse a lot of people, I think, because your numbering system doesn't bear any clear relationship to our highway.
Right.
If you know what I mean.
Yes.
Okay.
It's code, he's talking in code.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Just stop me and I'll try to explain it.
All right. Just real quick, Mr. Major, thanks for this elaboration on the planning process underway. And this may be a simple question and I might have heard you wrong, but did I hear you say that the widening of I-26 is going to require replacement of the Blue Ridge Parkway Bridge?
Well, currently as it stands, the abutments for the Blue Ridge Parkway Bridge are right on the edge of the interstate. So, there's going to have to be some type of improvement to allow for widening the facility because there's just not enough room. And what we're going to do is work with the National Park Service and the Federal Highway Administration as well as our division up here to determine what's the best, what's the proper protocol to proceed with that particular bridge. Right now, as it stands, and we're not, we're nowhere near getting to a memorandum of agreement, but right now where it stands, it looks as if the National Park Service is encouraging the design of a new bridge, which would mean a replacement. And, you know, at the end of the day, for them, their input as well as the local input is very important and we would tend to try to deliver, you know, what's expected here.
And so, what does that do to the timeline?
Well, without getting into our agreements that are set up from the state's standpoint, that's our biggest challenge with it because if we're not responsible for the design, we want to make sure that it doesn't hinder the schedule because we don't want to give heartburn to everyone here that's expecting delivery. So, within our memorandum of agreement and contracts that we would set up, we would put in guides and standards that would put us in a position to receive the design in adequate time and for them to deliver what we need. Now, the construction of whatever the facility would be, obviously that, that's a different animal depending on the weather and the type of construction that it is, that's going to, you know, have to play itself out.
Thank you.
All right. Any further questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we'll have the 2002 Mills River Watershed Strategic Document Report or Update. Water Director Steve Schoeff is here. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Members of Council. I appreciate the opportunity to address you and in a moment, I'm going to introduce Forrest Westall, who is with McGill Associates. McGill Associates and Forrest were the authors of this review of the 2002 Mills River Watershed Strategy Document. We ask for this document, the 2002 Mills River Watershed Management Strategy Document, to be reviewed and brought up to date. It's now 10 years, over 10 years old and we wanted to know what the condition is currently in the Mills River watershed. I've provided you with a staff report that kind of gives the background of what's going on here and I want to leave the bulk of the time for Forrest to run through some slides and orient you to that watershed, not knowing whether you've had a chance to tour the watershed or not. So, with that, I'd like for Forrest to come up and then he and I both will be available for questions.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. As Steve said, we were contracted through both the cities of Hendersonville and Asheville to perform this review and I will say I appreciate the opportunity to work with the city on this. I'm very familiar with the Mills River watershed. I served as the Asheville Water Quality Supervisor for Deaner for about 20 years, so I'm very familiar with it. Also, very familiar with North Fork and Beetree, so appreciate the opportunity to look at this. Just to go through it quickly, here is the scope of work. I was requested to assess the water quality of the watershed as it is today and compare it to what was there in 2002, to look at local ordinance, state regulations and other regulatory programs that affect water quality management in the watershed. The 2002 report identified nine priority watershed issues and I was asked to review those in relationship to the current situation and then in number four, to identify the most suitable, affordable, important water quality improvements that would be available right now and would allow the cities to focus attention on that and also what just needs to be done. The point of focus of this is that obviously the highest and best use of any watershed is water supply, public water supply. So, the Mills River watershed is a water supply watershed and therefore, because of that, there's actually four intakes on the Mills River, two in the upper part of the watershed operated by the City of Hendersonville and two in the lower part, one operated by Hendersonville and the other one almost down at the mouth on the French Broad River is the City of Asheville. And the development patterns in the watershed, most of you may be familiar with the watershed. It is predominantly a forested watershed. I've got some figures on that, but it is, the national forest is 75% of the watershed. The lower end of it along the Highway 280, 191 corridor is obviously the highest development area in there and that just happens to be right above the two lower intakes. The local jurisdictions is an important issue because you have overlapping jurisdictions, the town of Mills River, Henderson County and Transylvania County. Transylvania County watershed is all within the national forest, so their control over the watershed is very limited. Land use and land cover, I'll look at the changes in the watershed since 2002, the water quality of the watershed, the regulatory programs that are there. In other words, what can, what do existing regulatory programs do to promote ongoing water quality, good water quality in the watershed? And then, the mechanisms for promoting improved watershed management. Again, giving orientation of the location, there's the dots on there are the location of the intakes in the watershed. The green area is the boundary of the town of Mills River and so you can see it is significantly outside of the watershed itself, but it also represents a huge portion of the private part of the watershed. As you can see from this chart, 92.5% of the watershed is forested, including that portion which is in the lower part that is not developed. Most of that area is forested. 5.5% is agriculture and then slightly 2% is residential. Very small portion of it is high density. For those that have driven down 280, you can see the new Ingalls development down there. That's obviously one of the new high-density type developments that are in the watershed. To give you a closer look at the lower end of it, just to give an idea of the private section, I think it's pretty fair to say that the upper portion, the national forest section, there will be no great changes in those unless the federal government gives the land away. But for the most part, it's going to stay pretty much like it is in the lower section. You have still 68% forest, but you've got almost 24% of it is agriculture and still just a very low percentage of high density. Land use change and conversion, looked at the distribution of land use and land cover from the period, looked from 1998, had some aerial photos and some infrared, remote sensing information. To be honest with you, there was very little change in the watershed over this 10-year period, very little change from a land cover standpoint, very little change from a population standpoint and it really basically, the character and nature of the Mills River has stayed pretty much the way that it, the way that it was in 2002. That doesn't necessarily mean that there are not risks and pressures on this watershed. As I mentioned, the 280 corridor is going to be a development area. All of the land that's in there, the private property is subject to development. So, certainly the, it depends on the economic pressures for that area. Just looking at the jurisdictional areas, mainly because to talk about regulatory programs, not only does, are there state and federal regulatory programs, there are local regulatory programs. Zoning, stormwater control, management, planning, all of the things that can affect the future development in that watershed, those are critical relationships. I don't really have to tell you that the City of Asheville has no jurisdictional area in this watershed. The City of Hendersonville has no jurisdictional area in this watershed. This watershed is, the local governments that are there are not currently, do not have intakes of their own. They do use some of the water from Hendersonville in this area and I think that that's a key issue. It's almost, you have to develop a cooperative relationship since you don't have any, at the term, it's normally used police power over that area, then you're dealing with this through cooperation. These were the nine priority watershed issues, the 2002 report, did land conversion, hazardous material control, erosion, stormwater, repairing buffer preservation, non-point sources from agriculture, wastewater management, groundwater contamination and landowner education and participation. The, you know, I think that the efforts made from 2002 to now made improvements in the watershed. I think the, looking at the water quality data in the watershed, the biological water quality, what we call the aquatic integrity, what they use is macroinvertebrates, insects that are inside the stream, there have been some improvements in the watershed. Over, since about the mid 1990s, there was a degradation of biological quality in the watershed due to what was anticipated as agricultural runoff because of the high-intensity agricultural activity in the lower part of the watershed, particularly right along the repairing areas, there, under heavy rainfall events, there's a high probability of materials washing in from those activities and because of that, we saw a depressed state of biological integrity in the river. Over this 10-year period of time, projects have been done, there's been a lot of public education work. The Mills River Partnership, which was a part of that, a big part of that 2002 report that was done, has done a commendable job of educating the community, doing training programs. The Division of Water Quality in the Department of Environment and Natural Resources has also continued to do monitoring in the watershed and they have succeeded, I think, in providing a high degree of visibility, which is very important because the activities associated with agriculture are very dynamic. They go from day to day. Tomatoes and peppers require fairly continuous application of pesticides and fungicides and so that means on any given day, you could have a situation that could threaten the water quality in the stream. So, the management of that and the farm workers' ability to do that properly is critical and so that education is a very important part of that. As I noted, the development patterns in the watershed, mainly high-density along 280, been very little land conversion over the last 10 years, the water quality I've already mentioned. And I want to say something about the regulatory program. Regulatory programs are set up mainly to deal with new sources of pollution. In other words, permitting for activities that are going to be constructed in the watershed end up being the things that they focus on. Existing development is a little bit less direct, it's kind of a response mechanism. There was a fish kill in the watershed in 2006, I believe, and that fish kill occurred due to pesticides runoff from a particular farm. The Division of Water Quality investigated that, they took an enforcement action, they found the property owner, but the problem, of course, was the damage is already done. So, you really need some kind of intervention process to prevent those things from happening. The regulatory programs that are there have very little leverage over existing development. The water quality in this watershed is determined by the existing development in the watershed and what activities are occurring there. I believe that because of this disconnection between regulatory programs and trying to improve and maintain water quality, you have to have a non-regulatory mechanism to do that. It has to be something cooperative. You have to look at projects and programs that can be put on the ground, that can improve water quality and there's really no regulatory program that can do that. The Mills River Partnership has kind of been the framework for this going back to the 2002 report. They've been very active in the last two to three years and so I think that's a critical aspect of it. The recommendations that were made from this report somewhat of a shift. Land conversion was listed as the number one priority in the 2002 report. Long-term, I agree, land conversion is probably, will be the biggest factor in water quality. The problem is more immediately, the agricultural non-point source is the greatest threat to the water supplies. And so, therefore, stormwater, non-point source management of agriculture and looking at existing development and trying to control the runoff from those are the number one priority in my mind and to work within the non-regulatory framework to try to find these programs and these onsite systems that can improve water quality. I think there needs to be some kind of regular training, public information work particularly as related to farm workers and other folks in the watershed that are day-to-day managing things that can affect water quality. I think there needs to be continuing planning efforts. You need to focus managing the land conversion, but that's a long-term commitment in terms of doing that. As I mentioned earlier, you've got a lot of overlapping regulatory programs, both at the local level, state level and federal level. Coordination of that is very important. I think the Mills River Partnership is a reasonable, non-governmental, non-regulatory mechanism. You've got people in the community interested in working in that, you've got people that are willing to give time to it. They've worked with the local county soil and water folks to identify projects in the watershed and I think that's going to be an ongoing mechanism for doing that. But I think there also needs to be a consensus in the Mills River Partnership. Right now, the Mills River Partnership, Asheville is a part of that, Hendersonville is a part of it, but there's a lot of other folks in there. And just to be honest and blunt, they're looking for funding from the City of Asheville and the City of Hendersonville. In my mind, that means that the cities have to be involved with that very closely so they agree on the priorities that are being set. I mean, if you're going to put money into the projects and money into the program, the city needs to be at the table on that. So, I think that's trying to establish a consensus. And I also think that the Mills River Partnership, because of the voluntary nature of it, it comes and goes dependent upon grant funding. There needs to be some way to fund that over some long period of time. Otherwise, you're going to lose that focus and they went through a period from 2002 where they did not have any activity and then recently they reactivated and they're looking, they've already received a grant from the state of $200,000 to do some additional work in the watershed. But with that long-term funding, they're going to languish in that process. Monitoring efforts are important. The Division of Water Quality has been doing a special study in the watershed, but that study ends, ended last year. I think it's really important to continue monitoring to show what the improvements in the watershed are. DWQ will continue to do its monitoring, but you may want to look at some additional monitoring in the watershed. One of the recommendations from the original report was hazardous waste. I think both cities have exceptional water quality or water treatment systems, they have good operation. Hazardous spills are immediate. 280, obviously, is a big area where you could have an accident or loss of materials and I think it's important for, to coordinate between Hendersonville and Asheville on responding to those. Both Asheville and Hendersonville has a mechanism for dealing with short-term water quality problems. Hendersonville has two upper intakes, so they can, they can convert the flow to those upper intakes during periods of poor water quality. City of Asheville has a 15 million gallon raw water storage basin that they can use in case of short-term, but even so, I think there ought to be some activities between the cities to strengthen that. I also think that because, like the fish kill that occurred, these things happen very rapidly and that means that you have to be able to respond almost immediately. Right now, there is no automated monitoring in the watershed, but I do believe that some automated stations upstream of the intakes would be helpful because when turbidity goes up in the stream, that means there's stormwater washing into the stream and having impact. So, I think that would be something to accomplish that would help out in protecting the water quality.
Thank you. All right. Any questions? Despite your promises, yes? You have a question?
Steve Shove, can I, can I ask a question or two? Steve, who you are?
Sure.
Um, there's an article this past Saturday in the Hendersonville newspaper, and Mr. Westall mentioned a two hundred thousand dollar grant. I think that was an EPA grant, if I'm not mistaken. North Carolina Clean Water Management Trust Fund added a ten thousand dollar grant to the partnership. Uh, it seems that Hendersonville, in its Water Enterprise Fund, i- is anticipating a rate increase so that Hendersonville can provide a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for a total of, well, they're, they're trying to get toward a three hundred and eighty thousand dollar total funding amount for the next couple of years to get this partnership really cranked up. Mr. Westall points out that, you know, the, you need to address it for many more years than that, obviously, especially as the threats evolve and land conversion takes place. But where are we, you know, both in our, in the budgeting process for our Water Enterprise Fund as well as, um, um, just administratively, how are we, uh, regarding this partnership? Is, is our current budget cycle, is there, are we actively considering adding in money to get the partnership, uh, completed at its target funding level? Uh, can you talk a little bit about where we are and what we might do in that, what the range of options are?
Right. Um, the request that we've received from the Mills River Partnership is for money to pay for administrative costs. And, uh, my experience in watershed management through, uh, a previous employment is that we funded projects that were directly related to water quality and that we did not fund other agencies in terms of their administrative cost. Um, so we have not actively put anything in the budget that would go towards funding administrative cost. And we have some money that we are willing to consider for specific water quality-related projects. And that's, that's where we are.
Are there, um, in, in the, within the budget of the partnership, are there specific water quality projects that we might be able to fund, perhaps letting others fund the administrative costs?
There are projects that they have mentioned in general terms, and, and those would be the ones that we would ask for more detail and help them develop more detail for consideration.
Well, I, I would say to my fellow council members, I think there, um, th- there are stories of watershed, uh, weak or nonexistent watershed management approaches in other watersheds across the country where water quality degrades significantly because of that intention. And, and because most of this three hundred and eighty thousand dollar budget has already come together and the partnership's looking for more money, I, I would hope that we would constructively try to look at ways to support it financially and otherwise. And i- in sorting that out now is probably not realistic, but if we, what is the timeline for the partnership being able, needing to nail down its budget? Do we know that for us?
They, they need matching funds now. They, they've already been awarded the grant, and they included us in their matching funds without consultation. So they just counted on us to fund it. Uh, and they need the money now. And we're laying people off. Frankly, I can't see funding another agency right now.
Why don't we, um, why don't we take up this discussion more in, more in-depth in finance, maybe, at our next finance meeting? Can, Steve, can you help make sure that, that gets on the
Absolutely.
...finance agenda, um, so we can flush it out a little more?
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right, are we, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, our next, um, presentation is from the Recreation Board, and we are, we are going to try to commit ourselves to speeding this up just a smidge here. Um, and we're going to, are we going, we got the podium lights working? All right, Wayne Wheeler is here.
Madam Vice President, uh, Madam Vice Mayor, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's fine.
Council members.
That's a good sound.
Little boost there. Thank you for your ongoing support of the work of the Recreation Advisory Board. Uh, Councilman Cecil Bothwell has been, uh, done an excellent job as our lay is on with the board, and we thank him for his work and for his sage advice. As you know, the Park's Recreation and Cultural Arts Department is the third-largest department in the city, and it's our goal to continue to support that work for the, in the following ways. Our board advises the city in manners affecting recreational policies, programs, finances, and land acquisition relating to community recreational programs. Our two thousand twelve to two thousand thirteen goals basically fall into four categories. We support and track the annual deferred maintenance plan for park and recreational A few examples, the new pool cover for the Malvern Hills Pool, and another one would be replacing the floor of the, um, uh, of the Montford Center Gym. The floor is in pretty bad shape. In fact, it's a trip hazard in a few areas. And also the lighting of that facility. Design improvements to the Carrier Park velodrome. Uh, there are some cracks and fissures in this surface, and we're in the, uh, design phase of that at this point. Install lighting at the Veterans Memorial, at the Memorial Stadium, and replace one bank of clay tennis courts of our, our tennis facility. And personally, I'm, I'm very impressed, coming from another city, that you have clay tennis courts for the public here. Usually you see those at country clubs and tennis clubs. Our second area is support the city priority capital improvement projects. And this includes, uh, the construction of the Dr. Wesley Grant Senior Southside Center, the first of three phases. Um, this, uh, this center and this building actually is the first LED energy-efficient building in, in Asheville, and it received the highest award, the Platinum Award. Construction of the River to Ridge Initiative, which includes and starts, if you start at the top, uh, the Boo Catcher Mountain down to Town Branch, Klingman Forest, and the Reed Creek Corridor. The city has this land, owns the land, and we're just going to connect it now so we'll have a continuous transportation corridor for hiking and bicycles. There it is, thank you. Realign the main entrance of the Nature Center. Area three, stay current with city initiatives and projects that affect parks, recreational facilities, and services. And this includes, um, the Lake Crigg Restoration Project, which encompasses Azalea Park, Recreation Park, Gaseous Creek Road, and the realignment of the Suwanenoa River in that area. Uh, also the River Arts District Transportation Improvement Plan. And finally, area four, engage with Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts Principal Partners. Uh, one of these is the Montford Playhouse Capital Improvements of the Ample Theater. We've renewed, recently, we renewed the lease for ten years at one dollar. And the players of, at Montford will make significant improvements over the next ten years. That involves the kiosk, putting in a kiosk with information in it. I think it might have a, a ticket, um, facility to take tickets. Seating, upgrade the seating in a new pedestrian path that'll be, um, wheelchair accessible. The, um, also the Asheville Buncombe's Youth Soccer Association, capital improvements to the John Lewis Soccer Complex. That co- that, uh, organization, the youth soccer organization, provides the electricity, and they coordinate all the programs. Uh, the city takes care of routening, routine maintenance that we share with capital improvement projects. The Friends of the Nature Center, this group has contributed significant funds to the capital improvements, helping with the new entrance and the Red Fox exhibit and sist- and assisting with many of the programs. Uh, the, uh, the mini golf, the, the Muni Golf Course Agreement was just finalized this past year with the Pope Golf Corporation for the management of that facility in the ci- and it's going to save the city thousands of dollars every year, uh, going with that, um, uh, the company to manage the golf course. We have liaisons with other organizations. Um, we have a liaison with, um, the North Carolina Recreation and, and Parks Association. We send one or two board members to, uh, to the meeting every year, the annual meeting. And we also have a local liaison with the Belcher Festival and the Asheville Area River Redevelopment Commission. Are there any questions?
Questions? No? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excellent. Um, our next, our second to last presentation today is the River District Design Review Committee. Uh, Mr. Terry Meek, welcome.
Vice Mayor, City Council Members, appreciate this opportunity. I am the Chair of the River District Design Review Committee, and, uh, here representing that committee. Uh, to give you a little bit of information on, um, we, we submitted actually an year-end report previously, just sort of give you an overview of that, but also talk about our goals and objectives for two thousand and thirteen. This slide here shows basically the riverfront. Uh, you can see the little area that's sort of off-center to the left is downtown, and you can see sort of the physical size of that. The area of our review extends from the upper-left corner of the slide down to the bottom of that corridor over to the left, which is Envoy Road, where the French Broad takes a turn, goes north, uh, and then along the Suwanenoa River, which runs all the way over to the lower right-hand side of the slide. So you can see there's a great or a vast amount of, uh, property and land, uh, that exists that is, uh, under our review, uh, purview. A little bit of background, and this is sort of interesting. Uh, the riverfront plan was, uh, adopted by City Council in nineteen eighty-seven, twenty-five years ago, and, uh, the River District Design Review Committee was, um, put into place by City Council in nineteen ninety-seven, so that's been fifteen years ago. And I think at that time, the, uh, design guidelines were, uh, put together and adopted by City Council. So you can see, uh, a lot has changed in that period of time. Um, the, I mean, it's interesting, when you look at why, what the charge or why the, uh, committee was formed, uh, was two basic reasons. Promote Asheville's riverfront as a vital economic development area for the city of Asheville and western North Carolina, and to review and make comment on major works, projects within the River District in accordance with the River District Design Review Guidelines. Well, our committee is, is, uh, composed of seven members, citizens, all voluntary. Uh, there are two representatives that are, um, appointed by Riverlink. Uh, the balance of the committee is appointed by City Council. Uh, having a couple of, uh, the members are stakeholders or property owners within the River District. Uh, two are design professionals, and one is a discretionary appointee, which happens to be me, in this case. Uh, and so we have actually three, uh, design professionals on our committee. Uh, we do meet once a month at the, the last Wednesday of every month. And, uh, as you can imagine, over the past four years, the economy has been really, um, anemic, uh, to say the least, and, uh, we have not had that many, uh, projects to review. However, we have taken it seriously and felt like this was an opportunity to prepare ourselves for when the economy does change and growth does begin to come back. Uh, we, as was said, these guidelines are fifteen years old, and we're trying to look at how our actions can become more effective. So we, uh, actually met, uh, for, uh, ten times during, uh, the year of two thousand and twelve, uh, nine, um, regular scheduled meetings and one called meeting. I think this pretty well says what I just mentioned to you. Here are the three projects that we actually reviewed during the year. I'm sure each of you are very familiar with them. Uh, and as you can see, um, they are mislabeled, A, B, C, they don't coincide properly. But in any case, um, the, the important thing to note is that they all seem to be clustered in one little area, and that area is in the area of Riverside Drive and the Patton Avenue Corridor, the bridge, the Jess Bowen Bridge. The first one is the, um, let me see this. Uh, the first one is, uh, two thirty-three Riverside Drive. It's a container restaurant, and it is exactly what it sounds like and looks like. Uh, it is, uh, a restaurant that is actually under construction now to, uh, provide a restaurant on the riverfront, uh, and the use of, uh, shipping containers. We felt like this was, uh, a very good approach and a creative approach for the riverfront area. Uh, the other one was we, uh, heard, uh, comments concerning the demolition of the historic, uh, ice plant, um, and that was most recent. Um, and prior to that, we had, of course, the New Belgian Brewery made a presentation to us as well, uh, in their conceptual design phase. We, uh, have started and hope to complete this year, a presentation and a proposal to Council to change our method of determining our review, uh, I guess our review venue, uh, from a zoning-based review, purview, to that of a geographic. And, uh, we have prepared this, uh, map, which we will submit to you at a later time. We did, uh, make, uh, some reference to that, to the PED and planning zoning when we submitted it last year, and we're also, um, helpful in putting together some amendments, text amendments. Anyway, this, uh, geographic, uh, area map, we started out with actually trying to define how would we determine what is the riverfront? What, what's, what is important? And we, there's a pretty significantly defined bluff pretty much along all the riverfront. So we used that as the basis for our, our beginning. Uh, we followed up then by taking a look at each one of the properties that were, fell within that area. Nothing was residential that we, we had any, uh, we felt like we, we should have any review over. Uh, but the commercial, those types of institutional projects would be things that would really have an effect and would, um, have an impact on the look and feel of the River District. So, uh, what are our goals and objectives for this year? Continue to evaluate the effectiveness of the committees, uh, review process, and to make recommendations to Council as needed. We'll continue to explore how the committee might work, uh, more effectively, uh, with the Asheville Riverfront Redevelopment Commission. As, uh, Chair of the River District Design Review Committee, I also am an appointee by that committee to the Riverfront Redevelopment Commission. And so we, uh, serve as sort of a conduit of information between those two bodies. But we want to be able to work with this other commission, uh, in a more effective way, where we can eliminate some of the redundancy that occurs and streamline our approach and make it more effective and meaningful. And then we will, uh, continue to pursue with, uh, the change of the, uh, area of responsibility to a geographic-based map. In summary, um, typically, I think everyone knows that thinks about the River District Design Review Committee as, you know, it really doesn't do a lot and that we're not in the forefront of things. However, we see our responsibility as very important in the redevelopment of the riverfront. This is, uh, this is equally as important, if not more so, than the downtown. Uh, it has some real challenges because we're dealing with flood hazard areas, and those flood hazard areas require that floor elevations be, uh, put up above that flood level. And, uh, that affects the mass and the look of the, of the area. Prior to this time, the historic area, buildings were, had their floor elevations below these flood hazard areas. Uh, now our ordinance requires that it be elevated. So this is going to have an appearance, and we think that this is an opportunity to, uh, encourage creativity on the design professional standpoint of projects that are coming for us, that we can be effective in, in taking this asset and optimizing the asset. Um, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions?
Just a comment.
Yes.
Terry, I appreciate that, and, uh, Terry's been instrumental in, in design down there, and he's brought and he's brought several things, uh, during this downtime of, uh, relooking at how we think about the river and how it, it looks, and his enthusiasm is really commendable, and he's, he's been a, a good leader in both the Riverfront Redevelopment Commission and the, uh, Design Commission, so appreciate the work of, of both those commissions.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks.
All right, and finally, our legislative update, brought to us by Jeff Richardson.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. City Council, several months ago, asked the staff to, uh, come forward on, on a regular basis, uh, and give Council update on key bills that are in General Assembly that may affect Asheville, either local, local legislation or general legislation. I have a brief summary today that I will put before the Council regarding several of the key pieces of legislation that continues to move. The first is House Bill 252. This is the, uh, House bill that would repeal the Sullivan Act Amendment. City Council, I know, has, has watched this very closely. I'm going to turn it over to, uh, City Attorney Oost at the end of this presentation and ask him to talk with Council about a proposed resolution that Council will consider this evening. Basically, this House bill would be effective June 30th of 2013, and it would, uh, discontinue our ability to move up to 5% of the utility revenues from the Water Fund over to the General Fund for, for some of our key street and sidewalk improvements, some of our more, uh, regional economic development-related infrastructure projects. This, this will be discussed, I believe, next Tuesday at the Finance Committee meeting in Raleigh. House Bill 224, this is the, uh, uh, legislation, proposed legislation that would require Asheville to relinquish, relinquish our extraterritorial jurisdiction, uh, and it would, um, also not allow the city to initiate annexation proceedings. Uh, this has also been moved over to the House Finance Committee as well. We'll continue to monitor this.
Don't be alarmed, we just turned the heat up a little.
Okay. Wondering if someone was trying to get out. House Bill 79, uh, is the, uh, general, general legislation across North Carolina. Council's aware of this, we spoke about it earlier, we'll continue to monitor it. This would basically, uh, require two-thirds vote in, in a proposed area of annexation, and it would also, uh, the amendment would also eliminate all ETJ, uh, across North Carolina. House Bill 150, this is the, uh, proposed legislation on zoning, design, and aesthetic control, and this would, uh, mandate to, to cities and impose aesthetic, aesthetics controls over one and two-family dwellings. We're continuing to monitor this, uh, within our current UDO, and we'll continue to analyze what the outcome could be for Asheville. House Bill 120, also Senate Bill 108, this is the building inspections with some local consistency across North Carolina that would basically require, uh, cities with, with their, uh, local ordinances to fully align with the North Carolina Building Code, uh, and so there would only be the mandatory number of inspections throughout a, uh, an inspection process to certificate of occupancy. The House has, has voted in favor of this, and now it goes to Senate. Senate Bill 363, which is the, uh, tax reform bill, this is business tax reduction and reform. This one, uh, we've noted several things. First fiscal impact of business privilege license, uh, in the amount of somewhere between, uh, 1.4 and 1.7 million dollars annually. Uh, this, this bill, uh, we will also continue to monitor. It's, it's suggesting that it would have an effective date of January 1, 2015. Similarly, Senate Bill 394, lowering tax rates for a strong North Carolina. This is the tax reform bill, I apologize. This one, uh, does not hold cities harmless across North Carolina. We're still trying to look through this, uh, and determine for Asheville what this would mean in terms of revenue and, uh, how it would affect our budget and our General Fund. Parks Authority legislation that was recently introduced that would allow the city of Asheville and Buncombe County to enter into a Parks and Recreation Authority. The staff just received this, I know the, the Council's aware of it, and, and has looked at it probably since late last week, and we're, uh, we will continue to look at this and, uh, work through it from a staff perspective and be willing to, to take direction from Council accordingly. Finally, several additional, uh, bills that have moved, uh, I think we passed resolution last Council on Senate Bill 3, which would establish a Western Crime Laboratory Facility in Edneyville, which would help us in the western part of the state with a backlog of laboratory testing needs, uh, through the SBI. Uh, Operation of Mopeds, Council had a question about this. This is general legislation that would go statewide, that would require operators of mopeds to present a valid North Carolina license, insurance, and registration, and there, there are no exceptions for that, as I understand. Then finally, the repeal, uh, House Bill 30 is the repeal of a combined motor vehicle registration and tax system. That's a system that's been in, in, uh, design for about five years, and if House Bill 30 moves forward, this would stop the implementation of a combined system that's tied with vehicle registration and property taxes. I'll turn it back over to Mr. Oost, specifically to House Bill 252, and let him talk about proposed resolution, and certainly, uh, we'll take direction or try to answer any questions you have about any of the legislation that I've mentioned, and also, there could be some legislation that you may be aware of that I need to look at and be happy to do
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Council. I'll be brief. Uh, Members of Council have already been provided with a copy of this resolution. This is a resolution opposing House Bill 252 regarding Asheville Water System Fund Transfers. As, as you all know, the, uh, back in 2009, the city of Asheville got legislative authorization to use up to 5% of water system revenues to make, uh, uh, street and sidewalk improvements in connection with, with water line replacement, that, that, in connection with water line work. And, and House Bill 252 would repeal, uh, that 2009 session law, and, uh, and, and so we have put together a resolution that, um, that, uh, explains the history of the legislation and also itemizes, uh, or at least partially itemizes some of the, uh, some of the effects of, uh, of the repeal of that, of that 5% authorization. Unless Council desires any further explanation, I'll, I'll, I'll stop now and answer, and answer any questions.
Thank you.
Um, I noticed in Mr. Richardson's report that he said that this bill would, um, allow any contracts that are made through July 1st, I think, to go ahead. What if we contracted for work for the next 10 years, uh, now? Would, would those be contracts that would have to be honored under this bill?
Um, I suppose that argument could be made, but it's, it's, uh, our contracting process is, uh, is, it's, in order to, in order to get involved in a project like this, it's, it's probably going to be an impractical solution, but that's, uh, just because we, our, our capital improvements calendar does not go out that far.
Right. Bob, um, some have said that Asheville's a special case and, and that the 5% allowed for use on capital projects from the Water Enterprise Fund is, is like something that happens in no other city in North Carolina. Can you elaborate a little bit why, why this was placed, why this was passed in 2009?
Well, I think the limitation that you're speaking of was actually adopted in 2005, when Sullivan Acts 2 and 3 were adopted, and, uh, and that, and that limitation is a specific, is specific to the city of Asheville, and it, and, and I don't have it right in front of me, but it, um, uh, it, it prohibits the city of Asheville from, uh, the, the 2005 session laws prohibit the city of Asheville from, from using water system funds for, for any purpose other than, uh, water system purposes or for capital improvement projects and related, related to the water system. In 2009, um, we, uh, we obtained permission from the General Assembly to, uh, to use up to 5% of water system revenues for projects related to the, uh, to the water system. But, but the first limitation, the Sullivan Acts, is one that I'm, I'm not aware of that applies to any other city in the state.
And, and how does that relate to differential rates, then?
Um, it, it, well, it, it's, uh, the, 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 probably, the, um, it really doesn't relate to differential rates, except that, that as far as we know, Asheville is the only system that, is the only water, only city in North Carolina that cannot charge, uh, rates, um, for water in, in outside of corporate limits that are higher than, than inside of corp, inside of corporate limits. You know, the two are really not related, but Asheville, except that the fact, except for the fact that Asheville is, is subject to, to both of them.
So, in the sense of, so Asheville, in a sense, was allowed to use 5% of the water fund for capital projects because they could not charge differential rates, like every other city in the state? And now that option is also being taken away with this legislation?
I, I, I don't think that there's a causal relationship between the two, but Asheville was subject to both limitations, and, uh, and, and in 2009, we got a, got some relief from, from the limitation that restricted how we could spend the money.
And now that's going away as well, too?
Yes, sir.
But only if the bill passes.
Just a clarifying question, Bob. The, uh, the bill as it stands right now, in its current draft form in the legislature, does not yet say that contracts through July 1st are valid. It's, it has not yet been amended, is that correct?
Uh, uh, my understanding is that the bill that was introduced only repeals the 2009 legislation and does nothing else. There has been a proposed committee substitute that would honor contracts entered into prior to July 1 of 2013.
And that?
And, and that was supposed to, I think that was supposed to come up in committee today, but it, uh, it was not reached in committee.
Okay, so, when I, I just looked at the legislative status of this, and it, that provision did not yet show up, but it's something we expect.
I, I believe that that is, that is, that, that allowance is, uh, for the, for, for current contracts is, is contained in the proposed committee substitute.
Okay.
Okay.
I would move, um, adoption of this resolution.
Second?
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Do we need to take public comment on this motion?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Uh, any, anyone wishing to make public comment? Yes, please.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor, City Council, City Staff, Citizens. I support the city passing a resolution opposing House Bill 252.
Please state your name.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Teddy Jordan, 30 Normandy, Asheville, North Carolina. There's a tremendous drama being played out before our eyes here in Asheville and across the state, but today, I'm Senator Ashville. With every proposed legislation presented that would negatively impact Asheville, we have an opportunity. We have an opportunity as citizens and as representatives of the collective whole, the community good, AKA democracy, we have an opportunity to demonstrate who we are, what we stand for, what we believe in, what example do we want to set, what action would serve the highest good, what is the stretch to the limit, and us do the best we can do. And from where I'm seeing, from when I'm sitting, I'm not seeing the proposals that have been presented and in the manner they have been presented in have not come near close to setting our highest and best ability. The proposals have been divisive in nature, in nature, they pit one entity against another, county against city, citizen against citizen, and that is not a good example. The lack, the open dialogue has been lacking or nonexistent. A, starting a conversation with a threat is not a way to bring about positive change. These are not good examples of our highest and best behavior. This is unacceptable. This doesn't show a concern for the common good. Counties and cities both bring something to the, to the equation. We are two of a whole, we are two pieces of a whole, we're a community. So we've been provided with many, many opportunities to stand up for what we think we are. I accept and welcome the challenge. I look forward to participating in this opportunity. The divide and conquer only works if we buy into it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make comment on this motion? All right, are there any other questions or comments? Um, I would just add, I, I did have an opportunity to listen to the House Government Committee hearing, which was last week, where they took up House Bill 252, as well as the, um, ETJ annexation bill, and we do have, um, some champions across the state, legislators that are speaking up on behalf of cities, uh, with any opportunity they have and making eloquent and insightful comments. Um, and one of the questions they always ask is, has that city passed a resolution taking a position on whatever the proposed legislation happens to be? And that question in particular was asked of, of the city of Asheville regarding this bill. Um, so it, it's important that we adopt resolutions, taking a position on the legislation, making its way through the legislature, so that we can help our allies help us, um, as these bills are taken up in committee. This bill will be taken up, as was stated already, in House Finance next Tuesday at 8:30 in the morning. If you're feeling so inclined, you can actually listen online at ncledge.net, uh, to the hearing. And, um, we did have some folks down there today because the bill was supposed to be taken up today, but it got, uh, continued because, um, Charlotte's Carolina Panthers bill took up the, the bulk of the, um, House Finance meeting, which I did listen to and wasn't all that exciting, but it was, um, telling in terms of where, where the committee members stand. So, uh, we're going to have more of this, and, and we're going to hunker down for the long haul, but, um, I'm glad we're taking this step and adopting this resolution. With that, um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. All right, um, we are now into the public hearing section of our agenda. We have two items. The first is a public hearing to consider the conditional zoning of the project identified as Myra Village, located at 11 Myra Place, from RS4 Residential Single Family Medium Density District to RM6 Residential Multi-Family Low Density District Conditional Zoning, for a nine-unit multi-family development, including the completion of partially constructed structures from a previous project, and a modification request to allow parking within a property line buffer. Jessica Bernstein is already here, going to make the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, Members of the Council, Members of the public. As was just stated, this is a request to review conditional zoning from RS4 to RM8. The project site, uh, actually, this, this proposal or this site has been before this body a number of times in the past few years, so some of you, uh, maybe all of you have, have, um, acted upon it. The site consists of a single parcel, it's just under two acres in size, and it is frontaged along Old Haywood Road and Myra Place, and you can see it here on the Exhibit B map. This also shows, um, the status of the site, it's, it's partially constructed. The proposal, there was an original proposal in 2008 for a density bonus, uh, project that had 12 units in four buildings. Um, then in 2012, last year, I was before you again with the site, they had scaled back, this construction had stalled, and so at that time, it was, um, back down to seven units. I'm before you, uh, this afternoon with a new proposal for nine units in four buildings. So the current owner is proposing to complete the two duplexes that are on either end of the site. They're at about 90% completion, so there's not much left to do on those, and then also complete the two parking areas that are associated with those structures. Those, as you can see, those two areas are accessed, uh, from driveways off of Myra Place. The two new buildings, uh, will be in the center of the site, accessed from one driveway off of Old Haywood Road. It's a triplex and a duplex, and they've got parking in garage units underneath, as well as the individual driveways that you can see on the plan. And there was that mention of the small encroachment, and it's, it's quite tiny, it's right here. Um, this corner of the parking lot is, it's very small area, is within that property line buffer. They've got the sufficient amount of vegetation, so it really shouldn't be, um, too much of a, of an imposition. Staff is supportive of, of that request. They've, um, proposed the required landscaping, as well as the required open space, and a, an easement for, for a future sidewalk along Old Haywood Road. The project was approved with conditions by the TRC on the 18th of February and unanimously recommended. recommended for approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission last month. And the proposal, staff is supportive of it, as I mentioned. It completes a stalled construction site. It adds appropriately scaled residential units in this neighborhood, and we recommend your approval. That concludes my report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? All right. We will open the public comment, and if the developer would like to say a few words, this would be the time. Is there someone here? Yes. Well, a jack-of-all-trades.
Madam Vice Mayor, members of the council, today, I'm not wearing my attorney hat, I'm wearing my development hat. So, we have taken over this project, which, as you heard, was begun in 2008. It was a foreclosed project, unfortunately. It's been sitting like this for quite a bit of time, and we do propose to complete it with your help. So we are respectfully requesting that you approve this rezoning, so that we can complete the work as soon as we can and add this property to the City of Asheville. I've got Marvin Mercer as our engineer. He is here, if you have any technical questions to ask, or if you have any questions of me.
All right. Thank you.
I move to approve the conditional zoning as recommended by staff.
Do I have a second? And then I'll, okay. And I'll just, if there's anyone else wishing to make public comment, yes, please.
I'm Alan Ditmore of Lester. If this were not to be approved, it would revert to single-family zoning, which is always objectionable. It's objectionable in every case, because it's the primary cause of both sprawl and homelessness, affecting housing markets, you know, all the way out to where I live, affecting the entire region. And it causes a great deal of pollution and environmental damage. The closest affordable workforce housing really is essentially Old Fort, which is, what, 20, 25 miles away to get to Old Fort? And it's, you know, outside, you know, beyond the county line. And so, you know, when people, when friends of mine have talked, said, you know, or working class friends of mine, said, "Where do I buy a house?", I point them at Old Fort. But that's beyond the bus line, it's a long commute, uses a lot of gas, and something needs to be done about that, and this is a minor step in the right direction. It's not far enough, actually. You should, the permit should be for multifamily, high-density, and whether he wants it or not.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment? If not, I'll, yes?
Madam Vice Mayor and members of council, for the last several years, the North Carolina law has required that zoning ordinance is required, contain a statement of consistency, a statement of reasonableness. And I just, and recent cases suggested that we need to be explicit about including those things in the ordinance. We have been for some time, but I do want to direct your attention to those two statements that are contained in our ordinance, and I'll probably do that in all future zoning ordinance amendments.
Thank you. All right. We have a motion and a second. Are there any further questions or comments? All right. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much. The second public hearing for today is a public hearing to consider an amendment to the conditional zoning for Weirbridge Village signage package located on Hendersonville Road, Legacy Oaks Place, and Racket Club Road. Ms. Judy Daniel is here to make the presentation.
Greetings, Ms. Vice Mayor and members of the council. I'm happy to present this on behalf of Ms. Fields, who's away this week. This is consideration of an amendment to an already-approved sign package for the Weirbridge Village development within its conditional zoning, which was originally approved in 2008, excuse me, in 2006. Subsequently, in 2008, the developer of Weirbridge Village requested amendment to that conditional zoning ordinance for a sign package for the entire development, but not within that were sign boards for drive-through eating facilities allowed. This is to allow those, if they have a tenant now who does wish to use drive-through sign boards. That's what they look like? I'm sure you all know what they look like? We would state that while, they do want to use two, as it's become a fairly common practice for this type of eating facility. While that is not currently allowed within the zoning ordinance, supportive adjustment has approved these over the past few years on a general basis, as long as they are positioned so that they're not visible from the roadways. So with that caveat, we do support the amendment to the sign package to allow these for this new tenant for the Weirbridge development, and we find it to be reasonable, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Just to, one more point. The amendment within the ordinance would allow for menu boards on out parcels not to exceed two boards per out parcel. They shall not exceed 36 square feet per face, which is the size allowed in the UDO, and these particular ones would be smaller, actually. And they shall be single-faced, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Go ahead.
You said that they won't be visible from the road?
They're positioned so that they face the other direction.
Right. Would that be true of any others on the other?
Well, that's generally how we look at these. I mean, that's generally how we look at them when they're proposed on lots. If you've been to, like, McDonald's, it'll be at the back area.
Thank you.
Quick question. Judy, maybe eight months ago, we approved an additional curb cut access way into the Hendersonville Road, I believe, on, in this area. Do you know if development is underway on all the parcels now that front on Hendersonville Road?
There's, the developer could probably speak to this better, but we do believe they have a proposed use. It is not currently allowed within the conditional zoning. I believe that's going to, their proposal will come through the Planning Commission for consideration for an additional use, and--
I'll wait, I'll wait to learn at the appropriate time. I was just curious how the whole project--
It's moving forward, but because the type of use they're contemplating was not within the original zoning, it has to have an amendment, but because it's a stand of amendment, we believe it needs to go through Planning Commission first.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We're going to open the public comment, and if the developer would like to begin by making a comment, that would be appropriate.
I'm Steve Kellit. I'm a construction project manager for McDonald's Corporation, and we're looking at the out parcel at Weirbridge Village as a relocation to our existing location, which is approximately a quarter mile south on Hendersonville Road. That facility's been in operation here in the city for 30-plus years, and our intent would be to close that location approximately a week before the new location would open. Our business has gone through several changes over the years, and one of these changes is that the drive-through percentage of our business is up to about 70% typically in a restaurant. And this new drive-through layout that we've come up with allows us to much more efficiently move more cars on and off the lot safely than previously. And the second menu board, as she mentioned, is 31 square feet versus the 36 allowed, and so we would request this approval of the second menu board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there a question? We've got--
Mr. Kelly? We've heard from some neighbors immediately south of this location in the Crowfields development that are concerned about, as you say, 70% of the customer base now is drive-through, and they have a particularly challenging time with in and out of the entrance, which is just probably 100, maybe 200 feet south of this location. How much of your traffic do you anticipate crossing Hendersonville Road to get into your location? I know that there's a right turn in, right turn out. Does that mean the only way to enter this location will be off of the side of the road, the south directing side of Hendersonville Road? Or will people going north be able to also enter from the center lane, turning left?
We have an entrance at the back of our parcel from the condominiums that are right behind that parcel, as well as through the bank next door at the stoplight. So there's a couple of other ways to enter and exit off that parcel.
Okay. So one would be at a red light, turning left into there, or turning right into there at the light. And then, where was the other entrance again?
You can circle the two out parcels and come around to the back, and come in the back of the parcel.
Okay.
I think there's a red light there where the Applebee's is currently, and you could come up that road and around through the back, or at the red light at the bank next to us, you could come through. We'll have a cut through to their parking lot at the front, and then we have a curb cut at the rear.
Is there a light at the Racket Club intersection? The Racket Club Road intersection? Yes. And then there's a light at the Turtle Creek Drive intersection?
Yes.
So if you wanted to go, is your question if you wanted to go north and turn left into--
Well, the challenge, and I think we'll hear from some of the residents at Crowfields, is when they're exiting there, the entrance is immediately below the red line on the bottom right corner of the red there. And turning left, they oftentimes are blocked because of cars in the middle lane attempting to turn left into the commercial development, including what'll be the McDonald's now, too. And they say it's very treacherous leaving Crowfields, and this is only going to make it worse.
Do you want to address that? Go ahead if you--
I don't have any specific traffic counts of how we anticipate the traffic on and off our lot.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, members of council, I'm Rusty Pulliam. I'm the landowner. McDonald's will be developing their own restaurant there. If you recall, I know Chris, I'll see some Mark, extra y'all weren't here back in '06, but we got a pointer. No? I'm going to walk up here and I'll kind of talk--
We're high-tech here.
There we go. To give you a little history, I know Crowfields, Chris, you're talking about the Crowfields folks next door. My mother lived there for 26 years. We met numerous times with the folks at Crowfields, and it's in the minutes from all my prior two times here in front of city council. We offered to give Crowfields access to this light at Turtle Creek through their drive right here at the front. They would come right here, pull in behind the bank, and right out at the light at Turtle Creek. Every time I've been in front of council, I have stated that easement is there for them for free. It doesn't cost Crowfields anything. So if Crowfields is concerned about traffic stacking up here on the front in the left-hand turn lane that turns into that drive at Weirbridge Lane, off the light at Turtle Creek, they have access, still have access easement today if they want to get into that light, which would solve a lot of their problems for turning left. They can now turn out their driveway and turn right. If they want to turn left, they can get into that easement and get into the light. The problem is, I don't know why they haven't taken that access easement right up, but that's up to them. So that was an issue that we solved early on and offered to do that for the residents of Crowfields. So I hope that addresses your traffic issue concern.
Thank you.
Any other questions you guys may have for me as far as the developer of the whole site? Mark, to answer your question, one of the things that we did, we did come back about six months ago and ask for the right in, right out. That certainly is going to make getting in and out of that site much more easier. The city staff, the traffic engineers have signed off on this plan. They have their building planned, so everything is, I mean, the only reason we're here is because when we did our original sign package, we didn't think about menu boards on restaurants, which is an allowed use on this site. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to make public comment on this? Yes, please. Please come forward and state your name.
My name is Jim Curl, C-U-R-L. I'm the president of the Crowfields Condominium Association, and appreciate the time. When I was a kid growing up in Pembroke, Georgia, we had a little ditty we used to say, thought it was really clever, and it went like this. One bright morning in the middle of the night, two dead boys got up to fight. Back-to-back, they faced each other, drew their swords, and shot each other. A deaf policeman heard the noise and came to arrest the two dead boys. And if you don't believe this tale is true, just ask the blind man. He saw it, too. Well, I'm not sure who the deaf man is here or the blind man. Maybe they're both me. I'm here with about 12 of our residents. If I had known about any of this before yesterday afternoon, I'd have had 100 people from Crowfields here. This is a major issue for us, and it's going to be a major issue for property owners, voters, civic-minded people throughout the Hendersonville Road corridor in that little stretch that we're in. Putting a McDonald's next door at Weirbridge is going to take an intolerable traffic situation, a death waiting to happen, and it's going to exacerbate it tremendously. Not to mention the concern that we have about property values and about quality of life. I haven't had a chance to talk to the people at Deerwood or at Deerfield, but I think they're going to be just as upset as we are. The creeping commercialism in that little section of Hendersonville Road is, it's a I'm sure some of you are running for office next year. I know some of you are, because some of you have contacted me for support. We are going to be very concerned about elected officials who care about property values and who care about quality of life. Now, someone said to me earlier today, this is an issue, and the train has already left the station. And that may be true, and I don't know a whole lot about trains, but I know enough to know that there are switches that can be pulled that divert a train onto a siding.
Thank you.
So, does that mean I'm through?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I actually, last three minutes, can we have, like, this group?
So, under the rules, if you have three or more persons that would like to speak, you can have up to 10 minutes. You'll have to have two additional people yield their time to you.
Two or one?
Okay. Help me, two or three total?
Three.
Three total. I'm sorry. Is there one more? Okay. But don't offer it if you don't, you only need one more. All right. Okay. You've got it. Go ahead. We'll add seven more minutes on.
I don't know that I have a whole lot more to say than I have. I would love it if any one of you would come out and spend a few hours with us and let us show you what we're talking about in terms of the traffic conditions on that one little stretch of Hendersonville Road between Racket Club and Overlook. Someone's going to die there, and we've talked to the city traffic people about it, we've talked to the DOT, and we can't seem to get any movement on it. But it's going to be even worse if this all goes through. It's going to be worse. And I appreciate your time. I hope I didn't antagonize anybody. I'm really a nice person. In fact, I think if you ask any of these people, they-- In fact, I think if you ask any of these people, they'd say, "Oh, he's a nice man." But I do want you to understand the anger and the frustration among a lot of people who are property owners, who are civically minded and amenable to city organization and community organization and action, and who vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to make public comment? All right, I'll close the public hearing.
Question here.
Yes?
Mr. Curl, if you could step back up. Mr. Pulliam described a standing offer for an easement that would allow for access into his property and the opportunity to access Hendersonville Road at a light. Could you describe the dialogue internally within the Crowfields Homeowners Association and what y'all's response has been to him and how you regard it today?
Yes, I can. I'm new to the presidency at Crowfields, so I'm still learning about a lot of these things. I learned last week about the easement, and I think we will take him up on that, because it'll give us another option. It's not ideal for a lot of reasons, and I don't know that you want to go into all those here, but it wouldn't be an ideal solution for us. We've also looked into creating an entrance and exit on Overlook, but there are problems there, too. We're in a location where there doesn't seem to be a way in and out that doesn't create as many problems as it solves. I don't know if that's a good answer to your question, but it's the most honest answer I can give you. As I say, if any one of you is sitting around with your feet up and nothing to do, call me and come out and spend a few hours with us, even one hour, and you'll get a better sense of what I'm talking about. This is an issue that deserves a lot of conversation and consideration, and I don't think should be entered into hastily. But, anyway. I liked it when it was colder in here, because then you didn't think about the fact that you had to go to the bathroom. You know, you just thought about the fact that it was cold.
That's why we're trying to speed it up.
Yes, thank you very much.
I'd like to observe that I feel a great deal of sympathy for the neighborhood there and the changes that are going to occur. We talked about very similar changes that are occurring on Merriman Avenue where the new Harris Teeter development is and its encroachment, or the potential for changing the way things work for the Five Points neighborhood. But while I feel a great deal of sympathy for that, what we're looking at today is a question of one or two sandwich signs. We can't block this development. This development is already approved. It fits within the guidelines for this property, so we really can't say no to McDonald's. We can say yes or no to these two signs. That's really what's before us right now. And in regard to that, I think that if it's going to become our policy that we always allow two sandwich, whatever they're called, sign boards, we probably ought to revisit the UDO and make that the rule, because I think continually granting exceptions is a very, very bad policy.
That's already on our list. It's coming.
It's on your list. Yes.
Yeah. Mr. Curl, I have been out to Crowfields, and I've met with residents there and...
Come again.
I said I have been out to Crowfields. I've met with residents there. I'm well aware of the situation there for pedestrians and for traffic egress and ingress. There is some good news on the way, that with the next fiscal year beginning July 1, we are going to be doing sidewalks from I-40 on Hendersonville Road as far as we can go, and I'm quite certain beyond Crowfields. So there'll be an improvement in that sense there. We're looking at several miles of new sidewalks going in. But that said, I sent, one of the frustrations I've had is what many of the residents share there is that the development, the quality of development along Hendersonville Road has really eroded the quality of life for many residents along there, and it's made it very difficult for them. And as Councilman Bothwell said, with Harris Teeter, we're dealing with the same situation on Merriman, but on Harris Teeter's situation, we're also doing traffic calming there and we're approving things there. There's no such plan for doing that with this here. And as he also says, that we're limited here. McDonald's has already been approved, but the signage will not be, is up for approval today. And, you know, I'll be voting against the signage, because I want to send a message that the quality of development is not what we, the residents there deserve.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out.
One final comment response there. I think one of the issues with this conditional zoning is that it becomes an incremental, you know, the developer can just keep coming back and asking for a little more and a little more and a little, and each thing by itself doesn't seem all that significant. But over time, you have given away a heck of a lot, and that concerns the people in South Asheville. Concerns them a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Judy, I have a question about this. The zoning package that's already been approved a number of years ago provided for the usage, am I correct, of this parcel as a drive-thru?
For a restaurant.
For a restaurant, okay. So, A city council, not this city council, but A city council already sat, heard this, and voted to approve this conditional zoning, correct?
Correct.
All right.
And that was in 2006.
And the only reason, the only reason it's before us is because there's this newer model for McDonald's where they have the two boards rather than the one.
Which is, which is the new model for most of the drive-thru restaurants.
Okay. All right, thank you. I personally am challenged by this proposal, because I hear, you know, this is another one of these corridors where we have this tension between residential and commercial uses all along the same corridor. I have concerns about city council granting and approving a conditional zoning request and then not shoring that up with any necessary, what's essentially a tweak in this case, to that approval already. I don't know that that's a good way for a city to conduct business, to approve it in one month and then, you know, a year later or whenever, not approve some necessary application to further that already approved use of the property. So I'm struggling with weighing the two issues, and I, you know, anyway, I think that's of concern. I have looked at the capital budget projections for the sidewalk improvement on Hendersonville Road. It is significant. I think that, if I remember, the line item is something like $1.8 million. I mean, we're really following through on our promise to bring better pedestrian access down Hendersonville Road. So, you know, obviously, we're not going to be able to please everyone 100% all the time, but I think that we're trying to do our best to address the needs and concerns of the community and preserve that quality of life, making Asheville more walkable than it's been before, especially in South Asheville. But by also standing by our commitment and our promises to developers that have come before us previously on application. So I'm going to support this request today. Does anyone else want to make a comment or have a question? Yes?
Madam Vice Mayor, before there's a motion, I just want to remind the council of the vote requirement, since we have two members absent. Although the Vice Mayor and Councilmember, I mean, the Mayor and Councilmember Smith are absent, they've not been excused from voting on this matter. So in order for this amendment to pass on first reading, it would require the affirmative vote of all five members sitting here today. If it passes about 4 to 1 majority, it'll have to come back for second reading.
Is it possible to excuse them from the voting requirement?
That they would have to be conflicted out, and I'm not aware of any...
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay, so it's not just due to their absence that we couldn't do that. I understand what you're saying. All right, are there any other? Yes?
That would make this kind of unusually difficult, especially since we know the, how people are voting already. The realities of this thing is that we're talking about a sign package that's the real grief. The restaurant's going to go in and will probably have to go through the board of adjustment in order to get there, but probably will get there that way. So I would recommend that we probably hold off until we have, continue this until we have full council view.
That's a good suggestion. So, to the developer, if you understand what's going on here, because of our two absences, we will have to have a five, we will have to have five affirmative votes. Otherwise, this matter will have to come back before us on second reading. So if there's not any disagreement, we would like to continue it to the April 9th. Would that be appropriate, to put it on for April? Maggie, I'm looking at you. The April 9th city council meeting. Is there any objection to that? No, I'm getting no objection. All right.
Okay, so the public hearing's been closed.
The public hearing is closed, and do I need a motion? That's a very good suggestion.
This can be a very full meeting.
It's a full meeting. Do you want to put it off to the latter meeting in April? We're worried about how full that April 9th meeting is. Maggie, do you have any idea?
We have three public hearings and then the continuation of the Business Improvement District.
Oh, I have a full meeting. So what about the second meeting in April?
I don't think that's as heavy as the April 9th meeting.
I think that might be a better time.
If the public hearing is closed, it should be a relatively quick agenda item whenever it comes.
That's true.
You know, it seems like we could probably...
Bluff her.
That's right. With the public hearing being closed at this point, that would be...
All right, so why don't we have a motion to continue it to April 9th?
Some, huh?
And a second?
Second.
Okay. Anyone wishing to make comment on the continuance of the matter?
Does that mean, then, that the two people not here will come and vote on the 9th without hearing any of the public comment?
They will benefit from the presentation, but they will not listen to the public comment unless we determine that we are going to hear more public comment at that time.
This meeting is video-recorded and accessible starting tomorrow morning by anyone over the web, the city's website, and I suspect that, because this is an interesting topic those two members will likely review.
All right, anyone wishing to make, okay, no more? Yes?
I just had a question. Will we be able to submit written comment?
The question was whether or not there's an opportunity to submit written comment, and absolutely. And feel free, lots of people avail themselves of email and send us plenty of email, and you can do that as well, or a letter, whatever you prefer, between now and that meeting.
Or a phone call.
Or a phone call, absolutely.
Or buttonholes at the grocery store.
Or wherever, yes, the grocery store. And I wouldn't encourage everyone involved to take this opportunity between now and then to try to have some sort of discussion amongst yourselves in the interim. Often, we find that a delay in a vote on something allows for some creative compromising, if there is any opportunity to do so. All right, did I, did we vote? No, we did not. All those in favor of the motion to continue the matter, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. All right, that was continued then until April 9th. Thank you very much. That is the end of our public hearings. We have two unfinished business matters. The first is the consideration of a request for an additional one-year extension for the project identified as Eagles Landing, located at 179 Johnston Boulevard. And Judy Daniel is here to talk to us about this permit extension.
Hello again. Eagles Landing was originally approved in 2007 through a conditional zoning. The original developer wound up selling to Habitat for Humanity in 2009, but because of the fiscal challenges that have been going on over the past few years, they've not yet been able to start development on this property. Habitat asked for some modifications to the conditional zoning in 2009, which council granted, which extended their permit through October of 2010. Then the Permit Extension Act extended their permit through January of 2013. As they were still not quite there, they had asked me, as is allowed in the UDO, the planning director can grant a six-month extension if the planning director feels that is warranted, and I did, and I granted that, but they're still not quite there. They have asked for some funding for infrastructure through the home funds, and actually, the consortium has recommended that they be granted those funds, and that decision will be made in late April. However, because they feel their funding and their timing for construction might not start until later summer, early fall, they want to request an additional one-year extension, as is allowed for the council and the UDO as well. That extension would allow them to extend the permit through July 1st of 2014. The staff does believe this would be worthwhile, and it's important to support the efforts and commitment of Habitat to this project over these years, and it will support your affordable goal and create affordable housing, and we recommend approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Motion to approve the one-year extension per the staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Anyone wishing to make any comment on this agenda item? Yes, please.
I've heard national reports that Habitat is increasingly struggling to meet regulations all over the country, with local zoning and land use issues, and that a lot of, an increasing share of their cost goes into pulling the permits, and a decreasing share, you know, goes to buying the lumber and swinging the hammers. So if, so I just see any regulation of Habitat as being completely barbaric. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make comment on this item? All right, any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The next item is, of course, the bid, and that has been continued until April 9th. Under new business, Tony McDowell is going to talk to us about fees and charges for fiscal year 2013, 14.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor and Council. The item before you for your consideration this afternoon is adoption of the proposed fee adjustments for fiscal year 2013, 14. Fees for the city of Asheville, for our general fund, make up about 10% of our overall revenue and about 36% of our citywide revenue. Fees typically fall into one of three categories: general user fees, regulatory fees, and public enterprise fees and charges. And I'll just quickly highlight some of the proposed changes for fiscal 13, 14. Under the general user fee category, staff is recommending that council replace the $3.50 per month household recycling fee with a new $7 solid waste fee. This fee proposal is the first step in what we see as a multi-year program, a solid waste reduction program, that we'll be talking to you all more about as we move along with that. There are also some proposed adjustments to various parks and recreation fees that would bring some of those programs closer to full cost recovery. One thing I will point out, there has been a slight change. There were some fees in your package that went out Friday, some fee changes for the Aston Park Tennis Center, and staff is recommending that we take those out now and those not be part of the package that you all vote on tonight, so I did want to note that. In the enterprise fund category, staff is proposing, in the parking fund that we raise on-street metered and garage fees by 25 cents per hour. The first hour will remain free in all garages. In the water fund, for single-family, multifamily, and small commercial, there's a 1% proposed rate increase. For large commercial, it's a 3% increase. And for wholesale and irrigation, there's a 4% increase. These fee adjustments would also include the creation in the water fund of a new manufacturing class, and also a 1% increase for the capital improvement fee. These fees and charges were reviewed by the Finance Committee on February 26th, and there's an attachment that I mentioned with the packet tonight that has the full list of proposals for FY 13, 14. of proposals for FY 13, 14. All the changes that you all considering tonight would go into effect on July 1, 2013. And any additional revenue that, that staff projects from these fee increases, we will include in the proposed budget that we bring forward to you in about four weeks. So with that, I'll turn it over to council if you have any questions. Staff is here to answer those.
Okay. Anyone have questions of Tony?
Question, Tony. Regarding the Aston Park tennis fees, council's been getting a lot of emails about this particular item and the staffing. And you said that your proposal now is not to change any of the fee structure for Aston Park Tennis. Is, is staff going to bring something else back on that, or is the recommendation that they stay exactly the same as last year, or just what?
And Rodrick may be able to address that, so I'll let him come up.
Okay, thanks.
Counsel, we're going to look at it holistically. At the work session, we talked about different staffing levels and how we would cover that if we operate under a different alternative. So we're going to do it holistically and look at, are there other options to manage that facility? And at that time, if we can't, similar to what went through the golf course, then we'll do a complete analysis of all the fees and come back to council with a different recommendation if we can't find a different management.
In, within this budget planning cycle, like in, within the next two or three weeks or so?
We're going to try, looking at that alternative model for management, may take longer than that, but we're trying to test the waters now to see if there's another way to cover it. Because in our conversations, we looked at managing a different capacity, and we'll take that holistic and look at, if we can't do that, do we need to raise the fees up and bring that back to council?
Yeah, just to be clear, between now and the time we adopt the budget, there's going to be continued discussion about exactly what we can do for next year. Okay, good. I just want to make sure we have that open. Thank you.
Does that apply to the skate park as well, too?
Correct, correct. After the work session, we went back to look at, is there another way to do it? And then we'll bring it back holistically to council before they can close on the budget.
So Vice Mayor, so that I understand the order of it, then this evening, we really are here to adopt the suggested fees and charges, but we were, we're going to have the opportunity to discuss some of these things as we go forward. Are we just taking those two out? Are we going to consider individually the, the solid waste proposal, then the parking fund, and then the other? I'm not sure what we're trying to accomplish here. If we're just going to approve what's been done by the, the committee, or are we going to individually talk about these things? Or are we going to, I know we've done them in a budget work session, but felt as though maybe, and maybe we missed our opportunities to talk to them there, or we did talk about them sufficiently there. I'm just not sure exactly what we're doing here.
I think that the concept was that we did talk about fees and charges in the budget work session, and tonight, this afternoon, late afternoon, we have before us an ordinance which would just formally adopt these fees and charges, although there are a couple of items that we might later amend. But if there are certain fees and charges you want to pull out and discuss, this would be an opportunity to do that. Am I correctly phrasing that? Yes, okay.
That being the case, yeah, I think we have a pretty good idea of what they are. And quite frankly, in fairness to Mr. Barrett, I don't think we do a good job at this table of telling what we're doing, because it became very apparent that we were trying to, to Mr. Barrett's feeling that we were going to balance the budget on, through trash. And that we were doing it. We're trying simply to, I think, recover the costs of solid waste handling and also add the increment of recycling to the downtown area. So that's a, a big subject. And I know this is the first of a progressive type of getting to a different place on solid waste collection and disposal. And I think for most residents, one of the things that people feel like they get with their ad valorem taxes, their property taxes, is that people feel like that they are getting their garbage picked up. But we're stepping kind of way out of that realm with this, but there's, there are reasons for it. Very expensive proposition to handle solid waste, and secondly, it's a much more complex situation than it's ever been. So I'm not sure we have given a great deal of talk in a setting that people really understand what we're doing here. But this is, as I understand it, we are going from $3.50 that we collect for curbside recycling, we're combining that into an overall fee of $7 per month additional per household that will actually handle their solid waste pickup, but will include the recycling component of that. So we're going from $3.50 to $7, and we're, we're beginning to get recovery on picking up trash and general solid waste. But we're, we're kind of going at it completely different than where we've been. I'm not sure we've told that story good. So I don't know where we'd go to tell it good.
Well, I'll, I'll add to that since we're talking through it right now, because I know many people didn't tune into the work session or, and haven't been in on these conversations right along. I've been liaison to the Sustainability Advisory Committee, where I've heard a good bit about this over some time. The goal that we're looking at now in, in the city is to get to a place where people pay as they throw, so that eventually, what we're going to do is there'll be two sizes of containers, so you can have a smaller garbage container that will cost less to dump than the larger one. So it will encourage people to put more into the recycling bin, which is free, and will help people want to learn that pretty much everything you're throwing away at your house right now is recyclable. Once you, once you get that, that, you know, it's not just the cans and bottles, it's not just the newspapers, it's the magazines, it's the junk mail, it's your receipts from the grocery store, it's the brown paper bags, it's the cardboard boxes, it's the pasteboard boxes, you know. The bulk of what we throw away is recyclable. We can really make that shift, and we're trying to help people have a financial reason to do that. Along the way, we're going to add curbside composting, so that your kitchen scraps will go separately to a composting facility. And again, that's to reduce the amount that we dump in the landfill to make the Buncombe County landfill last a lot longer. Any of you who are here during the fight to locate that landfill know that we will never cite another landfill in this county. There is not land available or the public will available, so we've got to make that one last. This is a huge matter, and it is a big change, Councilman Davis, it really is. But we really need, as a community, to be as green as we claim we are. We really, we have a really big green reputation, and we do pretty well on a lot of things, but we have a lot further to go. And that's what all of this is, is aimed toward. And it'll hurt a little bit, but it's going to help a lot.
Are there, are there questions or comments?
Are we going to do them each individually?
Well, I mean, we, do you mean in terms, for purposes of discussion?
Well, a, a motion and adoption of a fee.
Well, there is a very long table. Do you want to break it to somehow break it out?
Could we, could we move approval of all the fees and charges listed except for the few that we think we might want to discuss separately?
I think that would be, I think that's a good way. I was asking for process is what we was doing.
Yeah.
And I got carried away with the one.
Well, I, in that case, I would move for the adoption of the schedule and pull the, and separate and put off till later the adoption of fees related to Aston Park Tennis Center, Food Line Skate Park, and the solid waste fees.
Do you want to add any more to that list?
I actually don't mind moving with the adoption of the solid waste fees, but I think that there should be a larger conversation so the community understands what we're doing.
Well, I'll, I'll pull that part out and just leave it.
I know it sounded like I was against it, and, and quite frankly, I'm not against the proposal as much as I am the way we got here.
Mr. Barrett, I think he's begging for an interview with you on this topic.
I thought the article was, you know, you had to read the whole thing.
It's a good article, but it, headlines are, the city of Asheville is balancing its budget on.
I'll tell you, he's not in charge of the headlines until you're editor.
Anyhow.
Well, then that would be my motion without the, to pull Aston Park and Food Line Skate Park, Aston Park Tennis and Food Line Skate Park.
Is that all right?
Can we do it that way?
Works for me.
Okay. Are there, so to, to just reiterate the motion, the motion is to adopt the fees and charges schedule as it is presented and attached to our agenda, with the exception of the skate park and the Aston Tennis Park. Does anyone here wish to make comment on the motion? Okay.
Point one, you don't have a minute and a second yet.
I, I do have a second. I had one right here. Whittle, you're chairing this meeting. Here you go.
Hi, what is, second, Councilor Rothwell, and what he said about conservation, I think it applies not only to trash, but also to water. I know that my electricity bill, which is up at French Broad Electric, they've raised the monthly and haven't raised the meter rate very much. And, and more than my half my, I'm very good at conservation, as you can hear this, and more than half my, most of my electric bill is now monthly. So, you know, what's the purpose of getting Curlicue lights and all these suggested, following these alternative suggestions, a new refrigerator, if, if I'm paying most of my electric bill by the month and it's not even running through the meter? The other thing I have is it's, is it's regressive. It's like a poll tax, that the charging per household per month is like, almost like charging a tax per head, which is a poll tax, and it's widely considered, it's widely considered regressive. I heard a Democrat, it was a young Democrat, Buncombe young Democrat a long time ago, opposed gas tax, saying it was regressive because poor people spend a higher percentage of their income on gasoline than rich people. And it may be that poor people throw a higher percentage of garbage related to their income than rich people. It doesn't make them use more gas, or throw away more garbage, or use more water. They use less of all three, substantially less. And so if you charge a rate, you find a way to charge a rate instead of a fee, then you're being more progressive and more environmental and more conservation oriented. And there's a way to do that other than the two-sized trash cans, and that's property tax, that the people who throw away more trash correlates pretty well, not exactly, but pretty well, that the people who own more property. Also, the main reason to haul the trash out of the city is property values. The reason, you know, not to leave the trash in the city is because, because that would suppress the property value and with it the property tax base. And so, so if the motivation is, if the motivation is to get the trash out of the city is based on, based mostly on the tax base, then, then funding it through the property tax is, is the sensible way to fund it. There's another point, and that is, aren't these, some of these mandatory? If I say, if I say I can live in the city without using any water or without producing any trash, you're probably not going to believe me. Charge me anyway. These are mandatory, aren't they? And I think it is possible, although very difficult.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes, please.
Very good.
We're having a slight malfunction here.
I love what you said. Brother Christopher, city council vice mayor. I just watched a movie, which was politically incorrect, called Thank You for Smoking. I don't know if you've seen the movie. Don't you just love spin? You made a comment that it's not going to cost us to recycle. Let's see, $3.50 then up to $7 for solid waste. Spin. Let's see. That means that everybody who has listened to me about the fact that we are paying as citizens, we are actually paying people to pick up our valuables and sell it and make more money. Maybe that's getting around. Maybe people are going, why should I pay for you to take my gold? It's interesting, because now what you're going to do is by raising it, you're going to force everybody to now be employees of the city, but not paid. What do I mean by, what do I mean by employees? Well, that means instead of my taking my one trash can and just dumping it into my, everything into it, and having some paid employee at the dump actually make money, actually create jobs, because they could actually sit, because I did this when I was in prison, as the belt went through, I would pull out the recyclables. Now, I was only getting a dollar a day. They were making $17,000 off of a semi van, a semi trailer full of glass. So let's see. You're taking away jobs because there's no one that could get employed to go through the trash and have an income. But what you want to do to the citizens is you want to add more money and force them to recycle, force them now, oh, I can't just throw my trash, I'm now an employee. Because what's, what's next down the line? What about the person who doesn't put that recyclable into the recycling can? He just throws it into the other can. Is the city going to pass an ordinance where you can fine him for not doing his job? Loss of rights, loss of freedom by the use of power of money. Double the charge. Now, everybody's got to recycle, because whether you recycle or not, you're still going to pay the $7 fee. Whereas now, if I choose not to recycle, I don't have to pay that $3.50 fee. Hmm. Is there a gun to my back? I don't know. Maybe there is. Is our government becoming such a dictatorship that if we can't get it one way, we'll manipulate another? Spin. Don't you just love it?
Is there anyone else wishing to make public comment on this motion? And just a point of clarification, I don't think there's anything having to do with fees and charges regarding the skate park in this. And then with regard to Aston Park, it's the fees for, for the usage of the, of the tennis courts. Can we agree that we're going to hear more about those two particular items in our budget work session coming up, so we won't need to discuss those further here today? All right.
Can I ask a, this is a dumb question. Rodrick, do we, are there, do we charge fees for use at the skate park?
Yes.
Okay. But that just wasn't on our list for now.
Correct.
But it, but, but we still can look at that, and my intent would be that we will look at that.
What you're hearing is that we would like to look at that.
Absolutely.
Okay, good, thanks.
All right. Are there any other questions or comments? Yes. Jen, we need four or five?
Because, because this is a budget ordinance, it, it, all it requires is a simple majority of a quorum. I checked Mr. McDowell on this. This is a, a, a vote, or it's actually providing direction with respect to the preparation of the annual budget for the next year. And, and so I think that that is, is, is subject to the rules of procedure that govern the adoption of the budget, and a simple majority is all that's required.
All right. With that, yes?
One comment, too, on the, on the water part of it. We are in line for what's been recommended over a period of time by consultants, doing the right thing by incrementally increasing a small amount rather than just waiting for a long time and have that happen. And we have given, created a new category for manuf, small manufacturers and the large manufacturers, which is helpful to them, and we feel like it's the right way to go. I think it should be noted that there's, again, we're not trying to balance the, the water enterprise budget. We're trying to be responsible stewards of it.
I think that's a good point, and in creating the manufacturers rate, we did work with the manufacturers, representatives from the manufacturers, as well as the chamber, and came, came to an agreement on how to proceed with that. All right. Reset? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Our last item then, thank you very much, everyone on that one, is a motion to authorize the offering of a retirement incentive program for employees who are eligible to retire under the North Carolina Local Governmental Employees Retirement System. And again, this is a continuation of something we started talking about in our last budget work session.
Hi, Vice Mayor and City Council, I'm Cheryl Walker. I'm the Human Resources Manager of Health and Wellness, and I'm going to talk a little bit about the retirement incentive program. With our continued budgetary constraints, we look at, we review, we evaluate opportunities for savings, and this year, part of that evaluation included an opportunity to look at retirement incentive programs. Historically, these programs have been used at the city of Asheville, and they've enabled us to reduce overall personnel cost. The last incentive program- The last incentive program that we offered was in 2009. The goal of this program is to create an opportunity for savings by holding some positions open through reengineering, restructuring of work so that we can achieve overall salary savings. This program would be offered to all full and part-time benefited employees who are eligible to retire from the North Carolina governmental retirement, the local government employees retirement system on June 1st or July 1st, 2013. So anyone who's eligible for early or full retirement, and that definition is defined by the North Carolina State Treasurer's Office. The program would be completely voluntary and employees that elected to participate in the program would receive an incentive equal to 15% of their annual salary and that would be divided up into 12 monthly payments that would occur after their retirement We've identified 154 eligible retirees, which is a little bit different than what you were given. We've done a little more digging, looked at a lot more information and come up with about 154 of those, 39 are eligible for full retirement and 115 for early retirement. The savings are a little difficult to predict, of course, because we're not sure exactly who would accept, who would enroll in the program and who would not. But the savings would be generated through, you know, reorganization, realignment of departmental activities. You know, it will result in some savings, but it can create some challenges within the departments to provide some critical services. So staff is committed to work together on opportunities to reorganize functions, to ensure that departmental business plans are evaluated and that work is prioritized and adjusted to match, you know, new staffing levels. We have, you know, an estimate for the cost would be, you know, approximately of 20% of those that are eligible do retire. It would create, you know, 29 or 30 open positions as of July 1st. So holding these positions open for, you know, about at least six months would create an estimated savings of around $350,000 for next fiscal year. Of course, if you agree to offer this program, we would report back on the financial, on the exact financial impact around the first quarter of 2014 fiscal year and in that first quarter financial report. Do you have any other questions?
Thank you so much. Any questions?
I see that people who want to participate in this need to report by May 17th, I think.
Yes.
And that's so we can plan for it in this budget cycle, right?
It is and with the retirement system, we have a minimum and, you know, we have a, we do have some timeframes that we have to get all the paperwork in so that the retirement system can process everything. So we are asking for everyone to commit to the program by the 17th.
Other questions? Not right yet, not yet. You know, I'm certain we've looked at it and we have no surety of who's going to be retiring, but do we feel like that there, and I see there's a fair number of them in public safety, are we going to be compromising anywhere along the line if everybody were to accept? Has that been given thought?
Yes, and we do have a provision in the, in the proposal that would allow us to, for the department director to work with finance and human resources to possibly stagger some of those retirements and allow someone to go a little bit past that July 1st effective date.
Yeah. I think that's important for the public to know that there are certain levels that we have to have to keep insurance rates and things like that right. So I feel confident that we're not going to have anything compromise public safety or customer service during this period of time. So I appreciate your report. Any other questions from the group? We're going to require a motion on this, so this one will, will require probably the vote of all four of us here, given the numbers.
I'm getting a procedural workout tonight, but since, since the Vice Mayor has, has left the meeting, my recommendation would be that you all vote to excuse her and vote to designate one of your number to chair the remainder of the meeting. And this will require, because this is not a, an action that has the effect of an ordinance, I think a simple majority is all that's required. And I do, and I would prefer this be done in writing, which I prepared, I'll be glad to read it into the record.
Okay. So the first thing we need to do is vote to excuse Vice Mayor Van Heimer. Have a motion.
Second.
A motion is second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye. I move to appoint Councilman Davis as acting.
Whatever.
Moderator, mayor?
Get it up.
Acting mayor.
Mayor Davis, welcome.
Appoint him to preside.
It's got a nice ring.
Sorry.
Second.
Thank you. I appreciate the confidence instilled in me. All right. So those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And let me, let me read a resolution in the record if you don't mind. Whereas pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 168-163, the City Council has the, is authorized to provide a retirement program for its employees. Now therefore be it resolved by the Asheville City Council that the city manager is directed to offer early retirement incentive program for eligible employees as set out in the staff report attached here to his exhibit A.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion is second. I'll open the floor for public comment. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Any other concerns, thoughts? And those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. That motion passes and, you know, there's a bit of sadness in that because that, I think the people we expect to retire over a long period of time are going to be doing that in a, in a quicker fashion and want to wish them the best and thank them for their service and, and again, assure the public that we're in no way going to compromise customer service or, or what we do as a city.
Yeah, I have a, in general discussion, I think we're in informal discussion, there's been a great deal of concern expressed about synthetic marijuana that's available throughout the city. And Councilman Davis and I heard a report about that yesterday at the Public Safety Committee meeting and it turns out, and I'm mentioning it because there has been so much concern expressed to me and I'm sure others here. The problem with enforcement is that the state law does not clearly, or actually too clearly defines what drugs are legal and illegal so that every time one of these new synthetic materials is confiscated, it has to be sent to the state lab and determine if its exact chemical structure is an illegal chemical structure. And what they keep doing is changing the molecular basis for these things slightly over and over and over again so the drugs continue to be legal. Apparently federal law has found a way around this and there is legislation going to be introduced at the state level to create a state law that will cover all of these variants of the synthetics. And what Councilman Davis suggested at the meeting and what we decided to do was ask the legal department here to come forward with a resolution for us to support that state law as it goes through the legislature. Other states have done this and the, in fact, the synthetic marijuana problem has migrated to North Carolina from surrounding states that have already fixed their laws. So we're working on it, folks. If it's a big problem in your neighborhood, be aware that we're trying to find a solution.
Thank you very much. I almost left that out. I think it's very important. Thank you. Other comments before we open the public hearing? I mean, public comments? I would like to say that last week, I had the great fortune of going to Washington to look at a program sponsored by MetLife about aging in place and it has to do with, as we're an aging community, we're growing an aging population and we looked at things like transportation, accessibility and affordability and looked at it. We were what, the smallest city there, we were there with a half dozen other cities. There were Philadelphia, I mean, excuse me, Chicago, Phoenix, cities of that size and it was a great honor to be there and listen to their solutions and their problems. And we had members from here in the community, parts of the council on aging, the retirement center at UNCA, Osher Center. It was a great, great experience and we're going to be coming forward very soon. Hopefully the mayor will create a task force to look at this problem because this city is challenged with a lot of those items. So it was a great opportunity and I'm looking forward to bringing that forward. Given that that's been said, then I would have one signed up for public comment. Brother Christopher Charomonte.
Brother Christopher, City Council, acting moderator. Want to solve the bony weed? Make what has been proven helpful legal. If you legalize marijuana, that gets rid of the garbage that's on the street because let me tell you something, it is not beneficial. Two, yeah, we're an aging workforce because we slaughtered for the last, since Roe versus Wade, a workforce. I mean, we have slaughtered children, they may not have been out of the womb, but we slaughtered children by the millions. Hitler would stand up and clap and say, "Great America." Life is what I put on that paper. Life. My mom had leukemia. She had a choice. Take medications, maybe extend her life four or five years and live in misery. Or choose the quality of her life and not take the medication and have a better, maybe, I think she lived a year from when she decided to stop having the cancer sores or caused by the chemotherapy. She chose a better life than to live. See, living is what the homeless do. We survive. We go day to day. And as a psychology major in the seventies, I learned there are certain basic needs you have to have to have equality of life, which means food, water, clean air and a nice, peaceful, secure place to sleep. I understand that, I think it's around 2015 when the tenure plan ends. I know what this, I know what the next plan is. I was told actually by a park ranger who was on the internet that our federal government is now taking bids for prison camps to be run by corporations. So if it's by the federal government, it means it's FEMA camps. One of the things that I find when I come to the city council is I get exactly three minutes to speak. Never three minutes and one, never three minutes and five seconds, never even allowed to finish a sentence, yet others can continue for sometimes long time. I'll give you an example of our government. Right now, the bill that's being passed in Congress, you know, the budget, but what is in that budget is something that nobody knows. I heard about it through 5710 AM, our radio station here. It's called the Farmers Assurance Act, but it's not for the farmers, it's for Santos. Think of this, what they're doing for Santos is this. Let's go back in history to 1950 and our federal government says to the tobacco company, you can never be sued by the federal government.
Same rules.
I know. But how come when the rich from mil, from everywhere else always get more time?
No, they don't.
Oh, yes, they do. If you like, I'll pull every one of your.
Thank you.
Wine does not become my friend.
All right. I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, a motion, a second, a third. We return.
Want to hit it?
Ah. You see that, you need.